May I have your attention, please? The opportunity to sign up for public comment or public hearing expires when the Chair calls the meeting to order. Sign-in sheets are located on the podium. Please switch all electronic devices to silent mode. Our meeting will begin shortly. Thank you.
I would like to call the regular scheduled meeting Fairfield County Council to order Monday, June 26, 2023, at 6:00 PM, Wentzboro, South Carolina. Next, it would everyone rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. Thank you. Next, we are down to the approval of the agenda. It's been moved and properly seconded in a discussion. Those in favor, those opposed, let the record reflect 5-0. And before we go any further, I'd like to announce that Mr. Gilbert is out with a illness and Ms. Green is on vacation. Next, we are down to the invocation. Pastor Jeffrey Williams of Jesus Christ Church. Mr. Williams, if you'll come forward.
Father God, I hold within my hand your holy scriptures. I pray, God, that you would rule and abide in all that is said and done in this meeting today. God, we give thanks to you through your Son, Jesus Christ, for these men and women who have been given the authority and power by the people to lift the heavy burdens off the poor, to strengthen those that are weak, and provide for those who are in need. We pray that the Spirit of wisdom and understanding will abide upon each of them and that clarity will prevail in their hearts and in their minds. We pray that the Spirit of unity will prevail in this place. And God, in all things, we give you the glory and the honor and the thanksgiving in the mighty name of Jesus. Put them under the shield of your own brother of love. Thank you, Father. Amen.
Thank you so much, Pastor Williams. Next, we are down to approval of minutes, and this would be for the regular meeting, 6:12 of 23, special call meeting, 6:14 of 23, and special call meeting, 6:15 of 23. It's been moved and properly seconded in a discussion. Those in favor, those opposed, let the record reflect 5-0 on the approval of those minutes. Now, we are down to item six, public presentation. A proclamation honoring the memory of Tommy Scott Young, Dr. Roberts.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of council. Is the Young family here? Honoring the memory of Tommy Scott Young, whereas Tommy Scott Young was a storyteller, poet, author, playwright, producer, teacher, sculptor, and a native of Blair, South Carolina. He attended McCrory Liston High School, Benedict College, and California State University, where he received his Bachelor of Arts degree in fine art and theater. He wrote and produced a play entitled Angela about the life of Angela Davis. He collaborated with Angela Davis herself, Jane Fonda, and Quincy Jones on this project. He also worked with Jester Hairston from the television show Amen to hone his piano skills. Mr. Young, Scott, I'm sorry, Mr. Young utilized his skills as a performer of classical, traditional, and modern storytelling throughout the nation, including being an artist in residence for the Artists and Councils Commissions in North Carolina, Georgia, and South Carolina. He also became a storyteller in residence at the Lincoln Center Institute. He was best known in South Carolina as the founder and director of the Katani Foundation, which was a leader in bringing nationally acclaimed performing artists to South Carolina. Its purpose was to enable schoolchildren in South Carolina to see nationally known artists and to promote outstanding performing artists in the state. The Katani Foundation founded Mayfest in Columbia, South Carolina, and the Arts in Schools Program for Richland County School District One. Now therefore be it proclaimed that Chairman Doug Pauley, District Five, and the members of the Fairfield County Council would like to honor the late Tommy Scott Young. We recognize and appreciate the long-lasting and continuing local, state, and national contributions he made to the arena of the performing arts, so order this the 26th day of June 2023.
Next, we are down to item seven, first public comment session. Dr. Roberts.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Several persons signed up to speak. First person, John Jones.
John Jones, District Four. As I was perusing through my past minutes, because I save them all, I have a stack about this high, especially from the previous regime, I noticed something and I just wanted to bring it to somebody's attention, especially those of you out there that are watching on Facebook and whatever, FaceTime, Time, whatever. I'm not tech. Come in here with the rest of us. Make yourself known. First of all, the thing that I noticed was when I looked on my computer, there were four blocks versus the normal two. They were basically telling me about ordinance number 815 to establish operating capital budgets, ordinance number 816, ordinance of Fairfield County Council to provide the creation of county road maintenance fund. And the documents that were supporting these things were very well done. This lady works hard for you. I was really impressed with that, and that's something that we've been wanting, and again, thank you very much for it. But what I did see is that the first block, Wednesday, June 14, 2023. I looked at the things that are the supporting documents and then went to the fourth block, and it looked like it was a repeat. And I just glanced over it. It's actually for Thursday, June 15. So there was a meeting, even though it was publicized, on June 14, Wednesday, first reading of these two ordinances, and then on Thursday, June 15, of these same ordinances. So the next time they pop up, too bad, you lose third and final reading. Don't do that. Don't do that. If there's a reason for you to have to do that, like you have to get ahead of the federal or whatever it is that gives the county money, tell us. That's all we ask. Just be open with what you're doing, and we'll get right behind you, and we'll support you 158.5%. That's all. Thank you.
Jeff Schaefer.
Good evening, council. Can you all hear me clearly? Good. And for you folks at home, I hope you hear me, too. Common drives are the subject on your discussion tonight. I sent in a request to have a drive reviewed about a month ago, and I got a response back that it's a common drive in the county. It's not a state road, belongs to me and other people and the county, the county's responsible. And the note said that we're not going to repair it, we're not going to work on it, we're not going to do anything. Meanwhile, it's flooding, the water's running over the road and coming underneath the house, creating mold and mildew, and just in general, it's been happening for some time because the county came down with their gravel spreader or their plow and tipped the crown on the road to run the water off the other side. So we have water puddling on one side and running off the other side. When I asked them when they're going to fix that, I got no response. Oh, I got a response, I'm sorry, I did get a response. I got a letter telling me that they're not going to do anything. Why? County's responsible for county roads, we should be doing something. I'll leave it at that. I hope I explained that clearly, that county roads are the county responsibility, and we should be taking care of them. You have an expenditure for gravel, that the county buys gravel, and their maintenance department fixes roads. Why aren't you fixing that road? Is there a particular road that you want to fix or other roads you don't want to fix? I wish it would be more specific and tell me why they're not fixing it, because not only is my property being flooded, the driveway has been washed out, it's a mess. It's on Armstrong Road, just for the purposes of me giving you the address. Thank you for your time.
Wanda Bright.
Good evening. I'm Wanda Bright. I'm a transplant to Fairfield County from Florida, but I am a 15-year resident here, and I would like to stay here. But I am here today to discuss the possible millage rate increase that may occur, and I would urge you to refrain from any millage rate increases. And my reasoning behind that is that I feel the only discussion needed regarding millage rates is that Fairfield County does not have a revenue problem and therefore does not need a millage rate increase. Furthermore, I'd like to point out how I arrived at that decision. The South Carolina Association of Counties has an easily accessible online reports that shows that we, Fairfield County, have ample revenue to take care of our citizens and the county employees. First, I would take a report that compares counties of like population, like population to us, it's the smallest grouping that is online, it's called Group Five, and I have it here, should anyone like to look at it. It's also available online. So, Group Five compares counties of like population, and it is the most like Fairfield with 25,000 and under population. However, this chart shows that last year's general fund budgets, or last year's budgets, Fairfield had the highest budget by far. It actually had double some of the counties in its groupings budget, and that's easily accessible. But if you're not convinced, let's go to the next highest group, and that would be Group Four. I've got that here, too. Group Four, this group has from 25,000 to 50,000 population. Out of 12 counties in this group, 10 had lower budgets than we do. So this, I think, is pretty much of a point, but let's take it one step further. Group Three, let me get to Group Three here, that is 50,000 to 100,000 population. Of those groups, there are counties that four of those counties had lower budgets than Fairfield. Therefore, I would conclude that this pattern clearly establishes the fact that we don't have a revenue problem, and we don't need a millage rate increase. I would encourage anyone to look online, the South Carolina Association of Counties has all of this information, and it is verified.
Randy Bright.
Randy Bright, Ridgeway, District One. In fact, as you know, the South Carolina Association of Counties has a plethora of reports that show we ranked at or very near the top of all counties in per capita spending, per capita general fund, and anything else as far as the government is concerned physically. The most disconcerting thing to me is, is that I don't think you guys realize the most insidious tax is a property tax, because a property tax does not take into account the current financial situation of the taxpayer. It taxes what they own, not what they earn. And it's sad that a homeowner buys a retirement property, and we raise the taxes, raise the taxes, not just on their property, where they live, but their boat, their cars, everything else. And in fact, we don't need it. We don't have a revenue problem. The South Carolina Association of Counties have enough reports showing that. What we have is wise spending problem. For example, our administration budget in 2019 was 419,000. We're presenting a budget now of $653,000 for administration. What are we getting for that? And we're not even trying to hire an administrator, really. Our attorney budget account was 300,000 this year. In 2019, it was 150,000. Yet, we don't send out requests for proposals, yet we don't send out bids. I don't see that we have this year. So we've doubled that budget in just a short few years. We don't have a revenue problem. Finance Department, $591,000 budget in 19. This year, $763,000. If you're at the top of the food chain in our county, you're going to come out big time. HR, 200,000 in 2019. 23, 24, $325,000. Where are you coming up with these figures? And we're not doing a good job in recruiting people. So that's not the issue. The issue is, we don't have smart spending. We've got a lot of empty buildings around this county that we've purchased, we think they're going to be great gyms, everybody told us we didn't want them to begin with, but we've spent thousands of dollars, hundreds, millions of dollars. We have Memorial out here, we have a memorial next to the trash center. We could have bought fire trucks with, badly needed fire trucks. We've needed fire engines, excuse me, we've needed fire engines for a long time, but we don't spend wisely. We don't have a revenue problem, we've got a spending problem. Thank you.
No one else signed up to speak. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. Next, we are down to eight public hearings, none. Nine ordinance resolutions and orders, none. Ten board and commission minutes, none. Eleven board and commission appointments, none. Twelve old business, none. Thirteen new business, none. Fourteen county administrators' report.
Ms. Johnson.
Good evening, council. First, under my report is the road fee, and Ms. Williams, along with the Public Works Director, is going to talk about the road fee.
Good afternoon, council. I gave you all a copy of the agenda briefing document, which kind of goes over the history of the county's road maintenance fee. County council approved a road maintenance fee in the fiscal year 2015-2016 budget, so this is not a new fee. This is a fee that was previously approved by county council in that budget year 2015-2016. At that time, the purpose of the road maintenance fee is to provide maintenance funds for county improved roads, so it's specifically for county road maintenance. Although at the time, county council approved the road maintenance fee, and there were discussions during the budget process about the definition of what counts as maintenance and how the fee is to be expended, it was never formalized with an actual ordinance. So it was just approved in the budget, but a specific ordinance just to the road maintenance fee was never finalized and approved after that. So by developing an ordinance, which was presented to you all, you've already done the first and second reading, third reading will come up this Thursday. Developing an ordinance avoids confusion, allows clear implementation of the use of road maintenance fee funds, and provides a guidance for how to use it. and provides a guideline for staff and citizens on how that funding is to be expended. The new ordinance also addresses issues raised by South Carolina Supreme Court in the Burns versus Greenville County Council decision that invalidated Greenville County's road fee, as well as the South Carolina General Assembly's response to Burns that amended South Carolina Code 61-1300, Section 6, and 6-1330, dealing with the county's ability to implement a service or user fee. So there was a Supreme Court decision with Greenville County, but then the South Carolina General Assembly came back and created those legislations that allow counties to, how they can charge the fee. So we're making sure our ordinance follows those state laws and those state recommendations in our new ordinance. Also, the ordinance would specify the designated funding source for future county road maintenance. So this ordinance is just to clean up and clarify what was previously done in that previous budget for the road maintenance fee. There was a question that came up at the second reading about how much funding the county's collected since then. So the county has collected $808,359 in road maintenance fees since 2016, and that's just through last budget year. Because we're still in this current fiscal year and we don't have the final numbers of what was collected. And we've expended $533,277. So we collected about $800,000 and expended about $533, since the fee was enacted in 2016. So we haven't hit $1 million in road fee collected. The county also receives road funds for improvements from other sources like the state National Forestry Fund and the C-Fund program. Those funds are not necessarily designated for road maintenance, like our road maintenance fee. For instance, the C-Fund program is a partnership between South Carolina Department of Transportation and counties to fund local projects and improvements to the state and county roads. But that fund is managed by the county's transportation committee, that CTC group. They oversee the use of C-funds and their priority is paving dirt roads within the county. So it's not for maintenance of current county improved roads. So we do have the Public Works Director, Jonathan Burrows, here if there are any specific questions related to how, what the money is used on the type of projects they use for the road maintenance fee.
Any council members have any questions?
Okay, next is the millage discussion. Of the eight mills that is being proposed, recommended in the budget, five mills would be used for the lease purchase of capital equipment. That's about $3.5 million. And then, the remaining three mills would just be used in general operations such as the annual lease of this building, which is $600,000 annually, retirement and insurance. And the Association of Counties publishes a millage by county. Our mill is rounded 143,000, the value of a mill. So, but, I wanted to point out, enlist all the counties, but I also wanted to point out, for example, like Charleston. The county millage rate is lower for some other counties, but the value of their mill is much higher. For example, Charleston, 55.6 county millage rate, but one mill brings in $4.5 million. Ours, about 143. Ori County, 53.2 millage rate, brings in $2.6 million. And Richland, 126.2 millage rate, but it brings in rounded $1.7 million. So basically, all of this is to show that these counties have a much higher assessed value. So they can bring in more money, the value of their mill is higher. And again, all of this is, the county millage rate is found on the Association of Counties website. Common Drives Presentation, or Update, really not a presentation. We're going to have Mr. Morgan talk about Common Drives and its legal implications.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, we have previously had a proposed road maintenance update, an ordinance that was brought before council, which did not go forward. It was unsuccessful at that time. But we've continued to work towards modernizing and updating some of the county's ordinances. In particular, it's Ordinance 674. And that is, the ordinance is available online, it's been posted. That is the county road maintenance ordinance that's currently enacted now. And one of the provisions that is in that ordinance deals with the concept of common drives here in Fairfield County. And I want to just make sure I read this out. A common driveway is defined as "a section of roadway that's private property, not deemed a county road, utilized by two or more occupied residences for providing access to a county road, highway, or street." And there's further information in our ordinance that talks about the maintenance, what counties can do and work that's performed on these common drives. There's been questions that crop up at times about, you know, who has access to them, who is responsible for maintenance to them. There's even been some E911 and naming issues that have cropped up as for these common drives. One of the issues that administration has asked myself and with Mr. Burrows, the Public Works Director, to look into is the fact that there are some concerns because these common drives, by their very definition, are private property. And there's always a concern that a county would then turn around and use public funds, expend public funds on private property. And that's actually expressly prohibited by the South Carolina Constitution. So one of the updates that we're trying to work through is how to navigate that legal issue that's been brought up. And there's also other issues as well. Some of these common drives, and again, I'm not the engineer, but I would defer to him. But they have some issues with the quality of the road, the width of the road, the drainage of the road, et cetera. So there are some concerns even still about, for example, trying to accept all of these roadways, even if the county wanted to do that, because then that could create some problems with the system itself. So we collectively, at the behest of administration, we're working through these issues and anticipate that we'll be bringing a newly revised ordinance that addresses some of the concerns that council has brought out, as well as the citizens, and also to make sure that it takes into account some of the things that Public Works has to focus on as relates to the maintenance of the roads. So we'll continue to work on that and bring that before council, understanding we're getting towards the end of the fiscal year. We're trying to push a budget across the goal line, so to speak. But it will be within the next few meetings.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I live out in the bushes, as everybody knows. There are a lot of people that live on dirt roads.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Two, three, four, might be a mile, but down in the road, in the bushes. And the county has, for as long as I have not been here, because I'm really not that old, but anyway, they have maintained them. They've scraped them, and then they started putting gravel on them. So where does that leave the people that live out in the country, that they have been doing this for years? Where does that leave us out there?
Yes, ma'am. One of the problems is the very definition that's included in the ordinance, which says that's a private roadway. So even though the county may have been performing some type of maintenance or service on it, it can't be considered a prescriptive easement because it's, for legal terms and legal reasons, it's by definition, private property. So in order for the county, in order to basically be able to make a claim that is theirs, would have to be some type of condemnation, whether it's an inverse condemnation or a straight-up condemnation action. Just by virtue of putting rock down on those dirt roads, I grew up and live on a dirt road, I call it the shrubberbs. I understand living out in the country. So, but just by the very act of putting that rock down does not convert that into a public roadway. So what does that mean for the citizens? It's still their property, it's private property. All of us that are homeowners, landowners, have duties and responsibilities that we undertake as it relates to maintenance of our property, et cetera. And again, that's one of the things that we're trying to address by modernizing this particular ordinance.
So you're saying you might be able to continue some kind of nothing?
No, ma'am.
Just quit?
If I were pressed to give you a yes or no answer, and I believe that's exactly where you're going with this, no, ma'am, it would be my opinion that the county cannot continue to expend public funds on private property and continue to maintain these roadways.
Okay, so what about these people that don't have any other way to get their roads scraped? I mean, they are elderly and that sort of thing. So where does that leave them?
Unfortunately, it leaves them in a bad position. And this has cropped up and reared its ugly head in other jurisdictions across the state of South Carolina. And I'll just give you an example, I'm not going to name the county, but they had the exact same type scenario. They wanted, obviously, to try to provide services to their citizens. And they created a policy in their ordinance that said, for example, "we will come out one time and provide rock services, so on and so forth", with the thought being, what happens if we try to get a fire truck down there, EMS down there, ambulance, transit systems, et cetera, et cetera. And that ordinance was challenged, brought before a court, and the court ruled it was invalid and said that you can't do that. And so that's one of the concerns that I think is pushing in this particular upgrade or modernization, is the fact that, should this be legally challenged, there could be some issues for the county.
So what are these people going to do?
I cannot say what each individual property owner is going to do. I would say, for example, I have to maintain 1,400 feet of driveway on my property. I don't ask my county to do that. I understand there are folks that don't necessarily have the resources to be able to do that. It's a very sticky situation, and I understand completely where you're coming from in those concerns. But from asked legally, I'm just trying to provide a legal response. I think that is the problem with the ordinance as it currently exists.
Well, why are we all of a sudden having to do this when we've been doing this for 100 years?
I can't say why it's being done for 100 years. And I understand that's, you know, it's been done for quite some time. I mean, it clearly predates me. I think Ordinance 674 was enacted in 2017, if I go off of memory. And I know it's been done for probably much longer than that. I just know that in other instances, when there's a challenge that's brought before this, and again, the county that I referenced earlier, when it was challenged, the county not only was challenged globally, but individual council members, all of seven, were brought before the court and were basically in a rule-to-showcause status. And they had to demonstrate why they shouldn't be held in contempt for expending or approving the expenditure of public funds on private roadways. And I'm just trying to protect legally the interest, not only of county, the county and the county council as a whole, but the individual council members as well.
Mr. Morgan, so from what I understand, we're being made aware that something that the county has been doing for however many years is now, or could have been all this time, illegal for the county to do. And once we have been made aware that it is illegal for us to do that, to continue to do that would be detrimental to Fairfield County and the taxpayers and to ourselves?
I definitely think it could expose the county if a legal challenge were to be brought. I don't try to guess what type of nature that would take in this particular county. I've just seen it in other instances and in other counties. And go back to Ms. Swearingen's point. For example, in that county that I was telling you about, about what had previously happened, the same thing happened there. Myself and my firm were brought in once that issue was brought up and we attempted to work with and were able to ultimately resolve it to the court's satisfaction and bring, basically, the ordinance into compliance. And Mr. Chairman, it's kind of the same thing that's going on here. This is something that was brought to our attention, and that's what we're trying to address right now.
Is there a way to look at some options toward, and I know it'd be quite a number of them, those properties being deeded, that partial properties being deeded to the county so that issue would go away? I know, and who would bear the cost of that, I don't know. But is that an option, or are there other options that you're aware of?
Mr. Ruth, that's definitely one of the things that we're looking into. Again, that would go on a case-by-case basis. In as much as there's private property, there's multiple property owners. You could envision a scenario where hypothetically, two grant the permission and want to, you know, convey their interests in the property, the third one does not. You've got issues wherein, and again, growing up in the country myself, you've got what we call goat paths. You know, these things are 12, 14, barely wild enough to get your pickup truck down there. Even if they were, property owners would want to bring them into the system, they just don't comply with the road standards. And again, I'll defer all the engineering. So it is being looked at, but it's very much of, it's not a blanket situation. It's going to have to be taken care of almost one by one.
I don't like it because I know how many dirt roads are out there in District 3.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, I just don't like it.
I fully understand, yes, ma'am. And please don't take this as just, I'm trying to provide the best legal advice I can to provide protection legally, both for the county and individual council members. Yes, ma'am. It's a pickle.
Yeah, it's just, you know, the elderly, they've got, you know, like you said, you're trying to get the ambulance down there. And what if their road hadn't been maintained and they can't get in there to them? Or their house is on fire? There has to be something that we can do, something, I don't know. You're the lawyer here, you'll have to figure it out.
And I appreciate your encouragement.
Are we going to let Mr. Burrows give his presentation? Or was that part of the presentation?
For better or worse, Mr. Chair, I apologize. It really was not intended to be a true presentation, but more for an update. Again, once we get closer into this, and Ms. Swearingen will definitely, and Mr. Ruth will endeavor to become creative. This is not a situation where there's an attempt to just wipe something off the board, per se. But we'll obviously have an opportunity to bring more information before council through administration and answer any further questions.
Okay. Before we move to audit update, Mr. Burrows, is there anything you would like to say? Hate to put you on the spot, but since you're here, didn't know if it was anything you wanted to add. Can we get someone from IT to come check it out, please?
What we can maintain and what we can't maintain. And the drainage part is the biggest issue we're having to deal with, with the common drive, because there's water lines and utilities that may be there that we can't locate or mark. So if we were to go in and do drainage on those and we hit them, then who's responsible for fixing that kind of stuff? That's the issue. But I'm on board to get whatever we can get accomplished and come to an agreement either way.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Does the county go around fixing the holes in the road? Do y'all fix the holes in the road?
Common Drives or?
No, no, out there on the highway, where all the holes are, do y'all fix those?
Yes, ma'am, on county roads, not SC DOT roads.
What's this from, county road and SC DOT?
SC DOT is a state funding, and those are controlled by the Department of Transportation.
Well, how do you go know if it's the county road?
It's in, and the road list is online in that Order 674.
Okay, so, this is my point. Back in the day, 100 years ago, this was back when they paved, when they did scrape the road, 100 years. 100 years, but I'm not that old, they would go and they would, you would see them dig it out with a doohickey machine, you know? And they would put hot, you know, hot stuff on it. Okay? But now, you'll see about 10 folks riding around with three trucks, and the little man in the front, he'll run around to the back, and he'll put some loose stuff in it, and he runs back around there, and they drive on to the next hole. Can we, is there a reason that we? Somebody coughed, I didn't hear what you said.
The counties never had asphalt equipment to do those types, and that would have been some contract work. But that's where, like I was in my presentation for the Capitol, we're going to need to transition into acquiring asphalt equipment if we're going to get into repairing it. Right now, all we have is a spray machine and a bag mix to fix potholes on county paved roads.
So do you have that in the budget to get a thing to put some hot stuff in it?
In the near future, yes, that's coming. If that's the way we want to go and transition into repairing asphalt and acquiring that equipment, or are we going to contract it out? So that's a decision that we're going to have to make.
Okay, but it's, you know, you'll see the little man run up there and put some stuff in it, and when he's gone and the log truck comes along, it's another hole. Right, okay, thank you.
Mr. Burrows?
Yes.
How many, do you know how many common drives we have now?
We have about 68 that have names, and then we have probably another 50 more that are just maybe off Newberry Highway, and there may be three or four houses on this driveway, and it may be 675 Newberry Road, when it's a driveway with three houses on it.
You said 68 with names, and then about 50?
Yes, I mean, they changed, and if somebody pulls in a trailer on there, you know, back two acres, then that becomes, it's now two occupied residences, so now that becomes a common driveway that we maintain.
And how much time do we spend on those common drives? In a month's time, or if you can give any kind of reflection?
At various, we've had to cut back a lot because my first year, that road maintenance fee with the rock was cut by 50%. So we went from $400,000 to $2, well, $450 to $225, right off the bat, my first year. So 50% of that money for rock, pipe, culvert, bag mix, asphalt mix, all of that was cut 50%. So then we had to trim back on the common drive to focus on actually county roads first, and then whatever we could get to the common drive was more as an add needed basis.
Right. So is it fair to say, with the reduction in your budget and prioritizing county roads first, that maintaining common drives right now is not being taken care of? Not in a negative way, but I'm just saying we're focusing more on our county roads.
As it was prior.
Right.
Correct.
All right. Any other question from Mr. Burrows? Thank you, Mr. Burrows.
Counsel, this is just a reminder, we have the audit presentation tomorrow at 3:00 PM. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question? I'm sorry. My last question. How do you communicate with the employees? How do you know what they would think's good, what they think's bad? Do they have ideas? How do you, how do you know what the employees are wanting, or that what they would have an idea that's a better way to do something? How do you communicate with them?
Well, actually, we rely on the department heads. Every month, we have a department head meeting. We relay information to them, council questions, things that's going on in administration, et cetera, et cetera. It's like an open forum, and they actually have the opportunity to ask questions, come up with ideas, et cetera. We're open to all of that. Sometimes in that setting, a department head may not just outwardly say their ideas and what can be changed or improved, but they do set up meetings with us, and actually, we've had several department heads come. They have excellent ideas on policy changes in their department, and they've actually instituted those. They come with possible savings in their department by changing some policies and procedures. And we also tell them or expect them that when we talk about things in the department head meetings, to go back to the employees. And most of them, if not all of them, actually, after we have a department head meeting, they in turn have a meeting with their employees to discuss any updates that we have.
So you're saying that the employees do interact with you and bring ideas in, and y'all can, some of the ideas are usable?
We actually have, actually, department heads and employees, because we have an open-door policy. So department heads and employees actually come together or separate and have ideas or any concerns. We're actually looking in right now to service concerns that some employees have about operations.
Okay, I have another question, I'm sorry. So the insurance went up, the retirement went up, what percentage did that go up this year?
I'm sorry, ma'am, I didn't bring any of my budget information for me. We had presented all of that. I knew the, I remember the retirement was another 1%, and it's been going up about 1% each year. With insurance, it was estimated, I think in our presentation, about 5%. So it's just some things in the budget that it cannot be controlled by us.
So from, let's say, 2019 to now, what percentage do you think it's gone up? Every year?
Yes, ma'am, it goes up every year.
That's four years.
Yes. Those are the two items that definitely go up every year, and we have to comply, of course.
It was brought up in the comment section that the admin had gone up, and the finance had gone up, and the HR had gone up, but is in that amount what the insurance and all that, and retirement and all that is figured into that?
Yes, ma'am, it goes into each other department's budgets. The retirement, and also, you know, with insurance, we can't tell an employee not to do full family. Even though being single is much cheaper on the county, the employer portion would be cheaper, but we can't dictate to them what type of insurance do they take out. Of course, full family is going to be much higher, and though, we put that into the budget as well.
Okay, thank you.
That's the end of my presentation, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson and Ms. Williams. Next, we are down to clerk, the council's report, Nun, item 16, second public comment session, Dr. Roberts.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Jeff Schaefer.
We'd the people elect you, the officers, to do a job for us. Thank you, Peggy, you are doing a wonderful job. We pay you a salary, and now we're going to ask you a question. What have you implemented in the last six months since you've been elected? What have you accomplished? What has the council accomplished in the last six months? And much more important question begs to be answered is, those of you who have had six years up here, sitting on your thrones, I'm going to ask you, how many more years of productivity does it take for you to give us a fire department, a police department, an EMS, get things resolved, answer questions that the public states? How long do we have to wait for you to come out and do the right thing? When will we have a fully operational EMS and police department that will benefit all the citizens in this county? There's an old saying, that if you stand for nothing, you'll fall for anything. And that may be your motto, but it's not ours. We're paying you for a job to be done. We're not paying you just to show up and talk and have a snack. Tell us what you've accomplished. I don't know how many different ways you want to hear the same thing, but you need to stop taking money that belongs to us until you earn it. And Dr. Phil says, of course, you're either contributing or you're contaminating. Pick one. In this case, it's very simple. Leadership is a responsibility, and we don't see leadership, responsible leadership, in this council. If you can't think on your feet and answer direct, simple questions, please, Mr. Chairman, don't think we're going to swallow your written and prepared speeches. Save that for the dummies. Or speaking of inappropriate things to do or say, you can gavel me anytime, that will just tell the public I hit a nerve. So here's another blunder I'd like to have an explanation for. How can you enter into a contract for a temporary administrator and pay this person $150,000? Give her assistant, give her an assistant and pay her god knows what, and have everyone here controlled by the attorney for whom we have approved our budget, that is twice what we were paying previously? Paying him now $300,000 and all I'm hearing is fear mongering. Don't do that, you're going to get sued, don't do that, they can take you to court. Ridiculous. If that's your advice, get a new advisor. You spent half a million dollars with three people. That half a million dollars could have bought us eight to 10 firemen. Do the math, it's not that hard. Spend the money appropriately. You're acting like amateurs that don't know what's going on or what to do or how to do it, and who's leading you and where we're going. You approve budgets without having the actual expenditures for the previous year or the year prior, and better than that, you don't even hold anyone accountable for their lack of performance. I got a few seconds left, or you just shut me off. Thank you, I'll sit down, but I'll be back.
Randy Bright.
Randy Bright, Ridgeway, District 1. It's good to hear you guys discuss employees. What concerns me is, apparently, we've forgotten there was an employee survey nearly a year ago. They told you what they wanted. We were going to make a plan to address it, but we've disrespected the employees by not following up to your own survey, yours, the government's survey. When will we have a plan in place to fully engage and address those issues that the employees expressed? Just like we never addressed the citizen's survey, never had a plan to address the citizen's survey either. But as far as the employees are concerned, we've just disrespected them by shoving that survey under the table. Not only that, well, there was a good point also about getting ideas for employees, and we've suggested many at times. That's a great way to encourage the employees for loyalty and to get good ideas out of them, to have them take ownership, to have them feel proud to be working for Fairfield County. One of those ways is to actually ask, instead of wait for them to tell you, for their ideas directly. In the hospital, before the hospital closed, we were given six months to live. We extended that six months, I was on the board, we extended that six months to a year and a half, which manifested in a long change reaction, the reason why we have a hospital today, an emergency hospital state of art. One of the things that was implemented to keep that hospital open was fully engaging the employees. We had software that took their ideas. When we had 100 or so ideas, by engaging them, morale improved, loyalty improved, everything in the hospital improved, customer service ratings went through the roof just because we reached out for the employees. We didn't wait for the employees to come to us. And again, that was an integral part in keeping the hospital open well beyond its alleged expiration date, which, again, led to the hospital that we have today. Respect your employees. Respect their input, seek out their input. Don't wait for them to come to you. Respect your employees by addressing their concerns in a survey that we've never even discussed up here, except one of the councilmen had to drag the county to do the survey, beg the county to do the survey. Finally, they'd be, "Okay, we'll do it." Well, we did it, but we shoved it under the rug, and we've got to show the employees for a change, we respect them, because we're not doing that now. Thank you.
No one else signed up to speak, Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. Now we are down to county council time. Any council members, Mr. Ruth?
Yeah, I'm just, it's been a long time coming, but apparently, we're going to have an audit report tomorrow afternoon and a presentation, and hopefully this will finalize this, and it's just a shame because this should have been done about in the last year, and we shouldn't be having to deal with this. But we are, so we are where we are now, and hopefully, this will be over. And I want to ask this too, and you can get back with me, and this probably, what's the chair, about where we stand on the permanent administrator position? And just check, see where we are there. Also, there are a couple of other issues that we're involved in with the town of Williamsboro, with the garbage issue, this lawsuit going on. To me, I don't know what the big deal, but I think we need to resolve it. It's not a good look for either party. We're working together on water and sewer infrastructure. This needs to be resolved, and even if it needs to be resolved without attorneys, I don't know. Maybe we need committees from both parties to work this out and resolve the issue. It just, we need to make this go away. And another one is, and I don't know all the ins and outs about it, is the farmer's market. I think that is a great thing, and we had one in Ridgeway at one time, and I think it's great, it's a tourism draw. Whatever the issue's there, I think we need to work them out, and everybody come together, and the only way we can go forward is working together. And so I think we need to simplify all this and put it behind, and so we can move forward. And that's all I got, thank you.
Ms. Swearingen?
I do. Okay, so there are people who are not liking our millage increase, and we don't like it either, but as Mr. Schaefer says, we have got to get our EMS and fire departments. Those of us who live out in the bushes, we have got to have something that's going to make us feel halfway comfortable. And I know it's an eight-mill increase, I know that. But are y'all aware that back in 20, let's see, 2007, they went up 31 mills? Did anybody get upset about that? This is eight mills, y'all, eight mills, that was four times what we're asking. This is a $32 increase on a $100,000 house. And if you're 65 or older, you get the homestead exempt tag, so that makes it go down to $16. Can you put a price tag on a life? Your husband's having a heart attack, we're out in the bushes. So one of our old EMS things that are needing to be replaced, they head our way, and it breaks down. So the husband dies, the child's choking, they don't get there. Your house catches on fire, the old fire truck is on his way, but he breaks down. They don't get there, your house burns up. What is the price we're willing to pay for a little bit of security? Those of you who live in town, don't have to worry about this. If you live just a few miles out, right now, there's nobody in Jenkinsville, Blair, Feasterville, Woodard, and so I'm being told Lebanon is unmanned right now because somebody's sick or something, got hurt, I don't know. So all the way out Jonder, all the way back up here, we're at the mercy, and we need more equipment, we need more people. But the only way that we can fix it right this very second is to have an increase. So, you know, there's a, people talk about an elephant in the room. There are a lot of elephants in this room, and we're just digging, digging around trying to get, not get stepped on. We're in a black hole, we're trying to climb out of that black hole. If maybe previous council- If maybe previous council had reconsidered somehow they were going to spend some of that $99 million and they set aside $2 or $3 million in an account, we wouldn't be asking for this now because we're only going to get $1.2 million out of this, I think is a collectible rate or whatever it is. That's all we're going to get. But that will help us with the lease agreement, get some much-needed fire trucks and EMS equipment, and EMS people get some, some people to help us out in the country. District Three, all the districts, we're all in this together. So anyway, that's just some thoughts for y'all to think on. And another thing that, for us to think about is the people who gave us the $99 million. There's nobody out there in Jenkinsville to tend to them. If they need an ambulance or a fire truck, they're at the mercy. They haven't got anybody out there. That's all I got to say.
Mr. Roof, I will respond to the town of Windsboro. I have talked to Mr. Morgan and to get a meeting scheduled with the town of Windsboro to see what we can do, come to the table and come up with some kind of agreement to work that out. Mr. Morgan is working on that, and Mr. Morgan, do you want to comment?
Yes, Mr. Chair, and just briefly to address your point, Mr. Roof. We have been in contact with the town and their attorneys. I will tell you, as part of the process, in order to get the collective parties to work together, particularly in light of the joint water and sewer, we've in essence kind of put a timeout to some extent on the litigation, and I know there's been some talk this evening about costs and fees and attorney's costs, and what we're doing is not necessarily pushing that matter forward very hard right now because we want to, you know, number one, save those costs, but number two, focus on the, the joint water and sewer, and appears that that process is working and moving forward, and so we're getting close to that time where we can kind of bring all of these issues and items together all at once. So there have been talks, there have been, you know, again, communications, there's been open lines of communication between the county and the town, and we'll be happy to continue to move those forward. Just wanted to make sure that you were aware that these, these things are being done.
Mr. Roseborough?
I guess I got a question for the attorney, I guess, and Mr. Roof. Who's suing who? Is the town suing the county or is the county suing the town?
The town is the one who initiated the lawsuit against the county.
That's all I wanted to say.
And Mr. Roof, in reference to the county administrator, myself, Vice Chair Gilbert, and Ms. Green serve on that committee to go over the RFQs that were presented. We should be meeting soon and picking a firm to go out and find us a county administrator. I also want to comment on Ms. Johnson and Ms. Williams. It was stated by a citizen tonight on how much money Ms. Johnson makes, and Ms. Johnson's salary is within the range of previous administrators that we have paid before. I also want to comment and, and say that Ms. Johnson was in retirement, chose to come out of retirement to work for Fairfield County at a time when we did not have a county administrator. And I think Ms. Johnson, Ms. Williams, along with administrative staff, have worked their tails off in the past six months to work on this audit, been up here late nights on the weekends, been up here late nights during the week, and, and me personally, I want to say, Ms. Johnson, Ms. Williams, job well done. I appreciate you. Thank you for being here, and I just don't see it no other way. Thank you so much. I think you're well-deserving of the income that you're receiving, and thank you to both of you.
Mr. Roof?
Yeah. I want to echo that, and I know, I know that, I called Laura, but Ms. Johnson, I know for many times she has called or text me and questioned, I mean, 11 o'clock at night, 11:30, and she's working, I mean, all the time. I mean, they have, they, they put in hours and hours and hours, and a lot of it, I realize, is partly due to what didn't, didn't get done last year with the audit, but there's just so many things that, that should catch up on, and they, they have done outstanding job, and I'm extremely proud of you. Thank you very much.
Any other council members?
Now we are down to executive session. In executive session, we will, item A, receipt of legal advice relating to proposed contractual arrangements with the Fairfield Joint Water and Sewer System pursuant to South Carolina Code 30-4-70, Section A 2. Have a motion to go into executive session. It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? We are now, let the record reflect, 5-0. We are now in executive session.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
It's been moved in property second to come out of executive session.
Any discussion? I will let everyone know that no action or no vote was taken in executive session. All in favor? All opposed? Let the record reflect, let the record reflect five zero, come out of executive session. Next, we are down to, it's been motioned, do I have a second?